All right, it is now five thirty. We will begin our work-study session for the Adrian City Commission on May second, two thousand and twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Keith.
President.
Commissioner Hope.
President.
Commissioner Roberts.
President.
Commissioner Miller.
President.
Commissioner Schreier.
President.
Commissioner Councilberry.
President.
Commissioner Gouw.
President.
All commission members present.
And at this time, I will now turn it over to City Administrator Greg Elwood.
Thank you, Mayor. This item we have to discuss tonight is downtown portion of our kind of trash discussions. Trash downtown has been, I won't say it's built, is sort of a, well, through a methodology that none of us still working for the city completely understand. Some users were billed six hundred dollars a month.
A year.
A year, I'm sorry. Some users were billed three hundred dollars a year. Some properties who theoretically didn't use the service were billed more. Say theoretically, because I don't think in practice, there really was any relationship between who was billed what and what the use of downtown trash service was. In essence, we have the four basic quadrants of downtown that are on the four corners, where we have municipal dumpsters available. We try to build those, utilize those services. So obviously, we have to, the price for that has increased, just like the residential trash service price increased as well. So as we used to bill out nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars a year, now we have to bill out roughly four thousand, six hundred dollars a year. We've gone through different strategies trying to figure out what would be the most appropriate way to do that. First question was whether or not really there should be anybody excluded from receiving a bill. For example, should a vacant building be excluded? Our thought at staff level was no, but that's a, that we want building owners to have as many incentives as possible to put their buildings back into use. And there's nothing to say that a vacant building doesn't generate trash. Taking stuff out there, doing whatever, but in, in any event, you shouldn't get a free ride for being downtown. So we came to this approach of, is that all of the buildings that's vacant? And we thought, well, what about properties that have their own trash service? Is that something that we want to continue to encourage? There's nothing stopping me from doing it, obviously, but the building I live in, for example, Strongback Building, there are totes in the courtyard. Well, the residents use those totes, but Rice and Marley doesn't use those totes. I don't know that the Remax really uses those totes. And certainly not all the residents put all their trash in those homes. They also utilize the dumpsters. But we felt like, no, that contracting for your own trash service shouldn't exclude you from participating in the downtown program either. So we essentially came to the conclusion that everybody in those four quadrants who is property owner should participate. And the question was, well, how? What methodology are we going to use to apportion that? The first thought that occurred, to me at least, the staff that was discussing it, was, well, you need to take account of square footage, and then you need to take account of the use, because use is the same, it's a little more intense. And we looked at different communities and how they rank the intensity of use. It's pretty uniformly, restaurants are ranked as the most intense, offices and residential the least intense. Some places have many categories, some places just have two categories. So we said it, Matt said about, not we, Matt said about trying to implement that formula. And pretty soon found that that wasn't going to work because of that ridiculously anomalous result. You're in church over here getting a bill of what was going to be, Matt?
Almost nineteen hundred dollars.
You know, nineteen hundred dollars a year.
And some businesses are paying less than a hundred a year.
And yet they, you know, probably generated the least trash. So that strategy didn't actually work. It's not proportionate. Then we thought, well, maybe we, we should just have two categories, like we sort of do now, high user, low user. Well, the problem with that comes in the portioning it between them. First of all, they shift. And second of all, there are relatively more of what we would categorize as light users as opposed to heavy users. And so what ends up happening, if you try to apportion the forty thousand and change that we need to collect on a sixty, forty basis, let's say, between the two, the heavy user fee ends up being four times as much as the light. And there's no, there's no way really to make the fees proportionate and collect the right amount of money. And, and so I asked Matt, you know, what, what, if you were to have a dumpster on your property, and some places downtown do, what, what would you pay for that?
So it would be a hundred dollars a month is what some other businesses around us are paying, so which equates to.
A hundred dollars a year. And then I said, well, what if we, if we assess the exact same rate to everybody, what would that be?
And we came up with four hundred and forty-six dollars a year.
And so our conclusion is, yes, billing everybody the same amount, some people are going to use it more than others, but it's a good deal for everybody. If you were going to give the service yourself, it would cost you twelve hundred dollars a year. Yeah, and we can provide it for four hundred and change. So that's basically what we're proposing. Well, obviously, we're here to discuss it with you all and get your thoughts on it. But anything you want to add to that, Matt?
I mean, that's, that's really the gist of it. I've got some handouts here that kind of show the different methods and how, how it broke down. I'll hand these out to you if you guys look over.
When you said a hundred dollars a month, your whole dumpster, was that through Stevens?
Um, I think that was actually Modern Ways.
And we don't want a hundred dumpsters. There's just no place but for them.
Well, that's the, that's the other part.
Not everyone. Yeah, if everybody did away with their, you know, their own company, like Modern or whatever, do we have adequate space in, in the dumpsters to handle all the interest?
So there's seven private dumpsters down in those quadrants right now. We assume that when we do this, they won't get rid of us. They should, because they have a better deal. We will have to add some capacity to our trash. Price of that gave you factors on it, includes the cost of it.
They can keep their current ones if they want to because of, you know, accessibility, it's right outside their door, whatever, correct?
They could.
So we're not.
Not everyone, obviously, most places downtown don't have a place they can put private dumpsters, because they don't own the property. They're building that size all the time.
Well, when I, when I first bought Morning Fresh, um, I was entered the former owner's contract with Republic. And long story short, they, uh, you know, I have two dumpsters in both my, both my buildings. And, and so one of my South Main locations bigger, the one in my North Main, because we don't produce anything out there, so it's smaller, we don't use much trash. And so I would love to know which company will give a dumpster for a hundred dollars a month, because my numbers that I pay right now is the South Main, I paid two fifty a month, that's three thousand dollars a year. That was, I, when I bid out the contract myself, because Republic, if you didn't notify them, it was in fine print. If you didn't notify them, they auto-renew your contract. And then, you know, and they would steadily increase your, that's why I have submissions with Republic. And then the guy threatened to sue me. I said, let's, I called my lawyer, he said, let's go. But then, of course, I, I told him, come pick up the dumpster. And then we're with Modern Ways too. And, you know, and they were the cheapest when I, when I did my bid specs about three months, or, I'm sorry, three years ago. So I paid two fifty here, and they all, again, this is restaurant usage. So you're, I mean, restaurants use way more trash. And then I paid one ninety north, which is twenty-two eighty a year. And so, um, I think that when you're talking about the restaurants, I mean, that's just a cost of doing business, because you produce the most trash. I mean, especially if you're a busy place. So, um, those, I mean, I, so what do you, so are you trying to get a formula where if you're a restaurant, you pay more, or?
Because we abandoned those efforts, because we concluded that just, I mean, first of all, you got to monitor it every year. You got to come up with a new, a new formula every year. But also, you know, deciding what that proportion was. Now, and, and yet having a, a predictable income stream, which we need to have, then didn't work. And so, you know, we just concluded, like I said, that if we give, bill everybody the same amount, yeah, some users will use it more than others, but it's a good deal for everybody.
Right.
Nobody could get a dumpster for anything approaching the price that we're going to provide them.
No, and they were, they were roughly half of what Republic was charging me. So, I mean, it's, it's, and that was Modern Ways. So, um, yeah.
Well, going back to what Commissioner Roberts was asking, so even though they can, they could keep their same service that they already currently have, they would still have to pay though for this service, correct?
Well, that, that is our intention. And so
I'm just making sure.
The situation right now, and John emailed you, I haven't been able to chance to look at it, but I asked John to look into it. We don't hit, we have an ordinance that basically mandates that residents have trash service. We don't have anything like that for downtown. So we need to amend the, that ordinance to provide the downtown district, however we define it, needs, you know, needs to pay for, needs to pay the user fee that was established for the trash service that we provide. You want to add anything to that, Chance?
No. I read the memo. I had, um, you know, I, my feeling is, you know, assessing everybody or how we're going to, not using the word, I guess, success, but um, everybody's paying the same. It's consistent with what we're doing on the residential side. Everybody, you know, whether you're a light user or a heavy user, everybody's paying the same. So, you know, consistency is what I like about it.
And if I understand correctly, from accounts, you and I have, there are a number of building owners that are currently paying nothing because we just haven't done anything with this bill. Is that correct?
Well, they're paying nothing either because whoever, person who, I know who came up with it, the person who came up with the formula determined that they didn't need to for some reason. Either they had told them that they had other arrangements, or they deemed it to be vacant, or whatever, whatever that reason was, is not around to ask. But, yeah, there are some buildings, like Strongback, for example, pay more.
But Strongback apartment people and rising still likely dump into the city.
Well, for sure, for sure Rice and Marley does.
Yeah, Rice and Marley does. And they haven't paid anything for trash since they opened as far as we know, not to the city. And we have no other, we have, we have no reason to believe they are paying for a trash service on their own private.
Well, they, they definitely have totes out back, but I just don't, I, I don't see the restaurant trash going out.
It's nasty, it's grease.
And this is per address, not like if there's ten Strongback apartments, they're not each being into the.
Correct.
So pretty much we'll make an inventory of the buildings downtown and say, all right, and then cut the total up?
Yep. Yep.
Four hundred and fifty-five.
I'd take that deal.
Can I, well.
It's a building project, yeah. Pretty fucking for free.
Well, you know. So what's the next step to prepare an ordinance for us to consider?
Um, I, I guess, do you feel, John, that we need the ordinance first before we, we, we can get it done before we need to implement it? Although we need to let people know it's coming.
I would crunch the numbers, define the parameters of the area that's at issue. The ordinance is pretty close, and we'll need a little tweaking, a revised ordinance, we can get it done quickly. The foundation is there per the amendment that was set around.
I, I would like us to get the ordinance adopted in the fourth of July first, have it in place, and we'll let people know it's coming. Also, downtown trash? Jay, you got any thoughts on that? Sound good?
Sounds good to me.
All right, well, our next time is presentation from the Crosswell Opera House regarding property that they are acquiring, additional property that they're acquiring downtown. I asked you if you wanted me to get this.
We were going to do it on the, but I thought I would bring one. I just have one for the commissioners. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Jerry Ryder from the Crosswell Opera House. Um, we're excited to let you know that the Crosswell is pursuing purchase of one twenty-four East Front Street, commonly known as the Farm Building, um, because that is the grocery store. I don't know where to stand. This is a tough for. Um, so if you want me to, just let me know. Um, so where we are currently, what you have in front of you is a preliminary design plan from architects that we worked with, the same architects that helped us with the renovation of the Crosswell Opera House that we did in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, when Evans out of Ann Arbor, Michigan. So there's lots to see there. Um, but what I want to make sure that you know is that um, we are pursuing purchase of the building. We have just last week completed, well, completed the boring studies on a phase two environmental of the building. We should have those results this week, and we expect to close on the building before the end of May. So we're like, it's a little lump in my throat. It's pretty exciting, a little nerve-wracking. Um, but also, I think, wonderful for the Crosswell, but also wonderful for our downtown. Um, so what we hope for the, in purchasing this building, is to do a couple of things to solve some needs of the Crosswell around storage and care for some of the things that we own, furniture, props, costumes. We are excited to be a part of what can be the renovation of a blighted building. I think this building, I don't know for sure, but I think it has come up in conversation amongst the city commission and others, because it is an eyesore. It's been vacant for about fourteen or fifteen years. Um, and it's time that something happened with it, and we are excited that we are positioned to do that. Um, so it is our short-term plan to make it safe, make it more attractive. You know, it looks pretty bad with all the boarded-up windows and that kind of thing. Our long-term plan is to really make it a vital part of the downtown, to really work towards it being a destination unto itself, to be something that the entire community can be proud to have here. And in pursuit of that, the Crosswell is planning to, um, we are pursuing and planning to submit a proposal to the Revitalization and Placemaking Grant Program through the M E D C. This program is one that is specifically targeted towards industries that have been highly affected by COVID. The Crosswell and theaters in general have definitely seen high impact from that. It wants to target those areas that are in the census tract zone, and this building happens to be one of those. So that is also very helpful for us. Um, and we believe we are very well positioned to fulfill the requirements of the grant, but more importantly, to actually follow through and make sure that this building gets taken care of. So what I'm hoping tonight is to take questions that you might have. Um, I can talk through the design plan as it stands at this moment. Um, there is a lot of opportunity to partner with the city, and what we're specifically asking, and what we hope to bring to you in two weeks, is a request for very specific support from the city of Adrian for our proposal. This is one of the requirements for the Revitalization and Placemaking Program. We can probably not require an actual dollar amount, but after meeting with Paula Holtz and members, as our rep at the M E D C, she was very specific. The city needs to have some skin in the game in order for us to get this grant. The grant is worth up to five million dollars. We are expecting this to be a ten million dollar renovation project. So the impact of what the city of Adrian might be able to do to support this project, the realization of that five million dollar grant is, it's pretty amazing and pretty outstanding, and could really help us make this happen in a much shorter timeframe than what we could do without it. So we have big dreams. So if you're looking at the building, um, at the drawing in front of you, you can see part of what we plan to do is to actually demo the southwest corner of the building in order to add an outdoor pavilion. We are dreaming of that as a timber frame structure that could be used for rentals. It could be used for our own programming. We would love to be partnering with the farmer's markets and having it activated while things are happening at the market and other times, you know, other downtown events. Um, and then as you move south towards the farmer's market and that parking lot, I think that as we, that we could work together, the city and the Crosswell, on really activating that space, making it a vibrant, walkable, very, um, instead of feeling like it's over there in the far north end of downtown, we can actually kind of change the narrative and make it the beginning of where you park and then walk into the rest of what happens downtown. That's what we are excited about. We'll put some finer parameters on that description as we get ready to present that to you in two weeks. But this is the dream. I mean, we don't know if we'll get that grant. We are committed to the early phases of this, buying it, renovating it enough so that it can be safe to work in, but we want this to be a destination. We want the whole area, farmer's market, the one twenty-four East Front, that parking area, we want it all to be its own cool spot in our downtown.
When is the grant due?
June third.
June third, coming up quick.
Coming up quick. We're coming in on two wheels, Lance Schreier.
So how are you doing with raising the money that you need?
Yeah, so we are doing fine. We have some deadlines in place for those people. So we are seeking, um, we have to demonstrate financial commitment for this project in general. We are working with a local bank on making sure that they're comfortable demonstrating their commitment in the form of a construction loan, which is what we have had in the past for our big renovation, as well as some early commitments, so that the, both the grant funders and the bank can feel confident that we can raise the rest of the money that we need. We will need to match their five million, uh, one-to-one in order to, um, have a successful application.
That would be a total of ten million dollars.
Correct.
And you feel that that would be sufficient to do this, Bill?
Uh, there's some bells and whistles that we might want to add. If we could come up with a little more, Mary Roberts.
I don't have that kind of mind.
You mentioned long term. So you have some short-term goals, that's getting the property, making it look better from the outside. So you mentioned long term. What are, what is long terms? Five years?
If we are successful with our R A P grant, the funds have to be fully expended and utilized by the end of twenty twenty-six. So that puts, basically puts us on notice for when we have to have the project completed. We are working already with Kriegoff, Lenaway, and Jason Husfield, if that's an obtainable goal. We expect to hear about the application by the end of summer. So there's time to refine, you know, we, we are applying under the preliminary design proposal, so we will want to refine this. And I think that's a great way to continue the conversation with the city. Um, your new director of parks and recreation, for all of you, I mean, it's, we want this to be a community project with just the Crosswell leading the way on fundraising, leading the way in every way that we possibly can. Because in addition to this outdoor space, we want to put a theater inside. We want a venue that has comedy, music, theater, plays, musicals, it can kind of, educational. We want students to be in this venue all the time, making use of it. So if we don't get the grant, it's a little longer term than twenty twenty-six. I, it's hard to know.
Reading my mind.
Yeah, it's hard to know what happens if we don't get it. You know, we're, we're counting on getting it.
So Paula was, was very strong, as Jerry mentioned, on the municipality needing to be, or to partner in the application. It occurred to me that, uh, amongst other things we might do, if we took ownership of a parking lot and expanded it as public parking, and created it as part of our Twiddell Street parking lot, that would be easy for us to do and, and of some substance, uh, open them for application. But we could go further at the point where any of the property would become city property. Obviously, at that point, beautification of it is eligible for the use of the estate, um, which would be a substantial amount of use at this point. And so that might be another opportunity. Up their score on their grant app to a point where it's going to be successful.
Did you say you have talked to Paula Holtz?
Yeah, I was on the call with Paula.
And she said that that would, uh,
We didn't, we didn't.
Their score, if we were involved that way?
We, we didn't go over specific ideas, as I recall, with Paula. We'd come up with those after the call. What they meant by.
I think any grant, you go for that big of amount, you, they want to see municipality and, and government backing, you know, to kind of get your foot in the door first. And then I just want to say thank you for, you know, for the Crosswell, because that's, that building has been an eyesore for years, and, and it kind of goes hand-in-hand with what we're doing now. And we're never going to get metered into ways it needs to get to unless we partner with, you know, individuals and nonprofits and, and take care of our own stuff. You know, whether it be people buying homes and, you know, and making them look nice, that have been neglected for years, or, or commercial buildings too. So like I told you guys, you know, you, you and Emery and, and Kerry, like when we met, when I met, it's like, if, if if you guys take control of this, I mean, I, the city's going to benefit. You talked about theater district. I mean, that's a cool component of it. And, and, and so it's very exciting to me. So, um, I'm all on board. I think that it's one of those things where we have to, um, partner with nonprofits, everybody to get the city back to where we want it to. So you guys want to acquire more buildings, just let us know.
That's all we'll give you.
Yes, point.
That's the second time you said that.
What, what intrigues me the most, as someone who's done a bit of traveling lately, is the proposed public restroom. And even though they wouldn't be owned by the city, I think having public restrooms in a downtown area is crucial for us to grow, you know, to grow. Um, if you don't have those, people are, you know, they're going to drive their car and leave to McDonald's or, well, that's not, that's not a good one. But, um, there's, you know, restrooms are, are very important to the way of life.
Pavilion.
Yes, don't forget we're got put some of the civilians.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, but, but the city wouldn't own those.
So, yeah. The proposed pavilion, I think, oh, I see. I forgot, I did, I did. Yeah. The whole area there.
But there's just a nice synergy between this, you, so.
It takes vision to go and attack that and go get that building, you know, and say, the bigger picture is what the vision's going to be. And if it's anything like what you guys did with the renovation, um, we're going, we're going to be really lucky. So.
The Crosswell Board, I, I refrain from inviting too many people to join us tonight, but, um, but they have been really, obviously, staying informed and, um, have appreciated all the support and just the casual conversations that we've had and, um, that they feel, uh, I would say, excited about the opportunity of having mutual success with the city.
See you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks.
The concept plan is on the planning commission's agenda tomorrow night. Approval. Concept. Shows our, you know, the intent of that provision is always to allow us to provide support for a funding application.
Like an exciting opportunity.
Yeah, thank you for thinking big and dreaming and, and putting in a lot of work.
Yeah, it's up. Well, I will point out that some Crosswell people who are here, Curie, Chris, Eric Gabel, and in the middle, there's Alan Brinkman. Truly, nothing happens at the Crosswell without Curie and Eric and Alan too, but especially Curie. So are these good in your hands? Do I need to collect those bad idols? Because now they're public for the world.
Okay, well, thank you, Carrie. Our next topic, my pre meeting is, is a housing study that one, Lenaway is undertaking with support. From the county and then potential opportunity for a strategic plan that would go along with that part of market analysis. That I understand that county was already contracted for. There's a companion piece to multiple strategies for implementing it. The group is going around all municipalities and counties, I understand, asking for support for this. Don is here along with the consultants who would work, who are or would work on this, Sharon Woods, who's doing the. The market analysis and then Justin Sprague is here from C I B planning as well. He would be the proposed consultant for. Strategic plan. And so that I'll turn it over to Don, who's going to do the presenting.
I think you said everything I wanted to say. But I did want to recognize that Sharon and Justin were here, but Greg gave me to the punch on that. So mayor and commissioners and administrator, thank you very much for. Let us have a few minutes today. Couple of years ago, uh, in one of our meetings with one Lenaway. Which is a group of volunteers. We've been meeting that since two thousand eight every month, working on some issues that are relatively important to uh. Not just the city, but to the county in general. We're all about one Lenaway and um. We began focusing on housing. We've been hearing about all the problems we have in housing, whether it be here or if it's Tecumseh, whether it be out in rural areas and. So we got very interested, especially when we found out that um. Federal government was going to give us all kinds of money to pass around. So. But we are, we formed Housing Lenaway. It's a partnership between one Lenaway and Lenaway Community Foundation. The foundation's our fiduciary. Joe Williams is very, very involved with us, leading this effort. And our, our whole goal is to improve. The county's attainable housing stock. Whether that be um, work with Habitat for Humanity, looking at redeveloping the Bixby property, looking at doing something with the wonderful old school. It's soon going to be level, I hope they're pretty soon. Anyway, um, so our priority again is attainable housing. Is what we think is foundational to economic stability, good health and quality education. And so about all the question points, it's from affordable housing, the high end housing. We're looking at the entire market. And it's countywide and every municipality will be involved in this effort. This was last hour, but I'm not sure, maybe before, the county, maybe the commissioner, probably still remember. The county did a, a survey and I don't know how many responses you had. You had quite a few. What's, what do you think as citizens, what's the highest need that we have in our community that we might address with the ARPA funding from the federal government? Housing ended up being number two. I was surprised that transportation was higher, but anyway, there's some good things happening there as well. Anyway, um, so that gave us some real impetus to try to get involved and move this forward. So. We are proposing a countywide holistic approach to all of this. By partnering with local governments, developers, realtors, nonprofit organizations, and just to give you a sense of people who are already on board with us. Habitat for Humanity, the Federal Home Loan, Home Loan Bank. Lenaway Housing Development Corp, Housing Help of Lenaway, Community Action Agency Lenaway Now, the Realtor Association, Home Builders, it goes on and on. So. So really, why, why does all this matter? We believe that for everybody to prosper, housing Lenaway County is really um, important. And we must have healthy and attainable housing at all income levels. You know, you hear the stories all the time about people who live in taxi cabs or in their cars or. Don't have a place to live. One, one, children who graduate from high school, inadequate housing. And we know. From past studies that there's a problem here. So one of the questions I know that the mayor said to me today is, well, we're pretty sure we know what we need. Why do we need to do what I'm about to propose? So anyway, I'll get to that in just a minute. Always a good question. So what we are proposing, we actually, we went to the, we applied to the county. For a relatively large request of two million dollars. Seventy five thousand dollars of that would be for a target market analysis. This leads to the question that the mayor had. If we know what we have, we know what we need, then why do we need to do a target market analysis? Well, the study we have is about, I think, six or seven years old. I'm not sure when the county did it. Twenty fifteen maybe. And it only looked at what, what we have in the inventory of housing. It didn't look at what kind of demands are being made on housing right now. What are the demographics of our area and things of that sort? So in a minute, I'm going to ask Sharon Woods, who's on with us, to talk a little bit about the target market analysis. But. In addition to that, we asked for three hundred thousand dollars to hire a contractor for three years, no, not three hundred a year, hundred thousand dollars a year, including expenses. To move this whole process along, to work with Sharon, uh, who's doing the target market analysis, to work with whoever does the strategic plan. Uh, we also asked for six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of gap financing. So that could be used for repairs. It could be used for uh, new roofs on houses. It could be used for all sorts of these. Rural in particular, there's some major issues with septic systems in rural areas. How can we help in that respect? Uh, we also looked at, uh, asking, we asked for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of gap funding for new housing development. So. You know, there's lots of cool things happening right now. How could we help that process move along? And then actually a couple hundred thousand dollars at the end to keep the contractor going and be sustainable. Right now, as you know, the county has sort of put a hold for a little while on the whole ARPA funding. Uh, the last report we saw was that our seventy five thousand dollars, the target market analysis was fairly firm in the, in the discussion. And the six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for repair funding and all that was still on the table, but nothing is certain. So I'm here to tell you that we have assurance, thanks to the community foundation, to pay for the target market analysis. If we get the funding from the county, that's great. If not, we're committed, we're under contract, and we're moving forward with that. Best question that just about everybody asks is, okay, once you get the report, Greg and I have talked about this, I'm sure. What happens? Don't put it on the shelf. That's why we want to go the next step and do a strategic plan. And also Justin is on and we'll ask him a little bit later to talk to us about the strategic plan. Without the two of them, I don't, this doesn't work. I mean, it's one thing to have the, the report. But if we don't have a strategic plan to implement everything we learned from report, uh, then we just don't see that this is going to be a viable. So um, Sharon, if you're on and you can hear me, do you mind giving us a little background on the target market analysis?
Yes, I bet. Thank you, everyone, for letting me be a guest this evening together with my colleague here, Justin Sprague. And so I, I do understand that you did do a, you, the county, Lenaway County had a. Housing needs assessment and target market analysis done. I believe it was, it may have been in two thousand seventeen even. We actually, I actually bid um, and submitted a proposal for that work. Um, the selection was done by the county and I believe they ended up choosing the lowest bidder. Um, the lowest cost bid to do that work. And so that company was a competitor of mine. And they came in, they did, to best of my knowledge, I think they've done one T M A in all of Michigan. And they did it for Lenaway County. Um, since two thousand and thirteen, I've done one hundred TMAs across the state. And the reason why I've done so many is that I was sponsored, my work was sponsored and in some cases kind of, you know, sideways, kind of. Financially endorsed by our state agencies, including MISHTA, the M E D C. The Michigan Department of Treasury's Community Development Division and the Michigan Land Bank. So those four state agencies have really backed the work that I have done as well as the work. And the work that I do in partnership with Justin Sprague and his team, C I B Planning. So I'm kind of trying to, anticipating some of the questions that you might have. You know, Don was nice enough to share with me, um, Madam Mayor's, you know, comments and kind of forewarned me that that question might come up. Why do we need to do a T M A when we are, perhaps we've already had one done? So hopefully that might provide a little bit of context. I want to explain what the difference between a proper target market analysis is and a conventional housing needs assessment. I'm going to try to be brief because I know you have a, a long evening tonight. But um, basically a housing needs assessment or conventional housing study will look at your existing households. And your existing housing units and basically compare existing household incomes with existing unit prices, whether they be values or rents. And basically try to match them up. And we know there's almost always a mismatch, right? Especially on the lower prices on, on, you know, addressing real affordability. So where there's a mismatch, then the conclusion is that there's a need to. Add more housing in such and such, you know, kind of price bracket. The difference between a T, that and a T M A is the target market analysis actually studies. Households that are migrating and that are actually on the move, migrating into and within, within Michigan. And migrating into and within southeast Michigan, your prosperity region, if we, if we can still use those words. So through, throughout Lenaway County as well as your neighboring counties. And my job is really to figure out to what degree can we intercept those migrating households? And then my job also is to figure out what are they looking for? How many of them are inclined to be renters versus owners? And when they do make a choice, what are they actually looking for? So. I'm being, I'm, I'm saying, what are they looking for? But in terms of housing, housing formats, are they looking for a house? Or a townhouse, a loft, an apartment? Do they want to rent or buy? Do they want an urban or a rural place? And what sorts of community amenities are they also looking for in terms of arts? And entertainment and recreational venues? What is their inclination to be different kinds of shoppers? So I'm very focused, a, a T M A is very focused on, it's kind of forward looking. Who's on the move and what do we need to do to intercept them? And make sure that we are competing and getting our fair share. When I say our, Lenaway County. I want to make sure you're getting your fair share of households that are migrating into and within the region. So then Justin steps in kind of working with me um, to help. The goal, his goal would be to help you identify. Any potential obstacles or barriers or challenges to implementing the recommendations of the housing study. So it goes to that next level. It says, okay, once I tell you, you know, what the market potential is, and I might say. You know, for Adrian, hey, you should build twenty new houses, detached houses every year, and you should also build a hundred. You know, lofts and fifty townhomes, you know, then Justin is, would be here to help. Go work through your, your current policies and documents and figure out what are the impediments, the challenges and obstacles. So I don't want to steal his thunder because um, really, I'm already um, graciously, you know. Contracted to conduct a countywide study. And, and will be including every jurisdiction, every city, village, census designated place and township will. Um, be included in the data. So I'm already, I'm, I'm already started on that analysis. The piece that we don't have is really, we haven't. We don't have the authorization for Justin to kind of step in. And I've encouraged, you know, Housing Lenaway to, to kind of. I've encouraged them to have him step in sooner rather than, than later so that he could do things like participate in meetings and. You know, I'm going to do some field work there and some market tours. Those are coming up. We kind of want him to be able to participate, to be funded, to participate in those next steps. So before I pass it to Justin, I'm going to stop talking and see if you have questions for me. So.
Sharon, before you toss it to Justin, I'd like to just double back for one bit. Justin's portion obviously is not funded at this point. And our whole concept was to go to every municipality within the county and ask them to participate in funding. It should not be a surprise that we started with the two biggest towns, Adrian and Tecumseh. That his charges would be seventy five thousand dollars as well. City of Tecumseh has already committed ten thousand dollars a couple of weeks ago. And we are asking City of Adrian to consider funding thirty thousand dollars of this, of the strategic plan. So having gotten that on the table, Justin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Justin, do you want me to, do you want me to share my screen and show, show your brochure or not? It's possible.
Thank you. So.
Did you want now, up now?
No, I think, I think we're okay.
Okay.
So good evening to the city council. Now, thank you for having us tonight to talk about housing and housing strategic planning. As Sharon stated, my firm, C I B Planning, they're based out of Fenton. Has worked with her on a number of these opportunities across the state of Michigan, focusing on. What we believe is really the ecosystem for development. And what I mean by that is. In, in, in our eyes, development sort of has five layers that all sort of need to be in balance. But first. Uh, to start that, we need to verify the market and that's what Sharon does. The second piece of that is to ensure that our existing policies are in alignment with the market and to determine. Whether or not we can currently, as our policies stand, realize the full market potential of new housing throughout the entire county. That's where we roll and step in and work with the communities to, to look at a few factors. What is the policy towards housing and the existing master plan? And then what types of housing is that asking for? And then second. What does the current zoning ordinance allow? And are there alignment or is there misalignment? And if there is, the next step is that we prepare and propose action items or recommendations. To bring those policies into alignment with each other so that the communities can realize their. Market driven potential. And, and so that is really what we're looking to do here. Is to, to work hand in hand with Sharon and the communities to understand and verify. If we can actually meet that market demand and what do we need to do to make that happen? This is a little different than a master plan. Now, we are not coming in with sort of a broad based idea to community planning. We are very focused on the, the factors that either allow development or hinder development. And then how do we, you know, address those factors? And so we're happy to answer any questions that you may have, but at least wanted to be here tonight to, to talk to you about it and, and see how we can. And support housing in the community.
So Don, I just want to check real quickly, do, do the commissioners here and the participants in the meeting, do they have the Build My Place brochure? In front of them?
Yes.
Everybody has a copy of it, yes.
Okay, so, so inside of that, I think it might be on page three or so. There's kind of a pinwheel and it kind of shows five steps. And the very first step, step one is the target market analysis. And then there's four additional steps. Basically, the Build My Place system is, is, was a collaborative effort between Land Use USA, my firm, and C I B Planning with Justin. So we kind of built this, this process of. So we kind of built this, this process of basically addressing what we're hearing, that we're hearing you say as well, that it's one thing to do a housing study or a target market analysis or a housing needs assessment, whatever you call it. But, you know, if, if, once we have the study, how do we actually get projects built? And this is what the state agencies want and what we want, we know that you want as well. So the other four steps are really intended to be customized and shaped to address um individual community needs, basically to figure out what are the impediments? What are the challenges, the obstacles to actually getting projects built? And can we formulate some action-specific recommendations focused on housing to help perhaps remove some of those barriers? And even taking it further, but actually working, Justin would work um with the communities um, on an kind of as-needed basis and kind of, there might be additional budget in, in play in order to do this. If you can imagine, there's, there's twenty-nine jurisdictions and the counties. So there is, there's, you know, we're, we're um, we're superpowers, but there's still limits to our superpowers. So, but there, but definitely, you know, Justin has experience working with communities throughout Michigan in terms of hands-on, one-on-one, you know, working through um removing the impediments and the challenges and actually even deal-making with developers, negotiating, writing developer RFQs, um, marketing, whatever is needed, um, education, coaching, doing small developer bootcamps and training, you know, there's so many, you know, drafting language that might be recommendations for, you know, zoning ordinance amendments, whatever needs to be done. You know, they have the talent and the team to, to help you work through those details and logistics to, to figure out what, you know, what might be a little off that might be impediments and how do we remove those barriers?
Correct.
Now you're short on time, so.
I, I guess one question I have is, you know, so let's say Tecumseh puts some that, you know, is putting that money in and we put that money in and then they come back and say, I mean, we, it's a risk because they could come back and say, well, the land's more expensive in Adrian and Tecumseh, or there's really no viability there. And we're gonna put it in some other place in the county where it's cheaper to build, where there's um, you know.
Taxes.
What, yes, I mean, all of those factors. So we, we honestly could, I, I'm just playing that part right now. We could put money in and then they, that could come back and say, well, we don't think there's really any place to put this housing in Adrian, in the city of Adrian. So sorry you put your money in, but it's going to the township or whatever it may be. Yes?
Well, I would be very surprised to find out that you didn't have lots of places that we could uh do housing in Adrian. But I mean, Tecumseh is probably gonna say the same thing, right? I mean, if, if we believe that we have a housing issue throughout the county, then we're asking everybody to participate. And we may ask Ogden. We're committed to it. We're already looking at additional sources of funding we can get. But in the meantime, to get this moving, we're trying to get as much participation as we can, so.
So let, but, so, I'm gonna back up a little bit, Don. So the seventy-five thousand, or seventy-five or, or, or whatever for, for the strategic plan. So what happens when that's complete? Who is that working document for? Is it for investors, developers, or is it for? Who would have access to that information by now? Because we're pretty much, Adrian's built out now. I mean, there's not a new subdivision that's gonna be coming to Adrian unless you take down buildings or, or um, I don't know if there's a lot of land that, that, because we have a unit issue in Adrian, not necessarily housing problem. And we have a, it goes hand in hand, we have, we need more units. So I remember Lynn Pundit telling me that initially, that we need units, whether it be um converting garages, you know, you know, in people's backyard to make those, you know, viable living spaces. So I guess my question, because I, you know, because we, you know, we've been accused of it, of doing a strategic planning, putting it on the shelf. So who's gonna have access to that document going forward? And, and, and then who's gonna use that information that's provided by these folks?
Every municipality gets it.
Okay.
They all get, they're all included in the report. They get the target market analysis, they get the strategic plan. Um, you know, it, it, there are gonna be some counties that are probably say, we don't have a housing issue. We really don't, we're rural, we don't have any municipalities or villages, cities or anything here. I mean, that may well be the case. But every, they're, they're looking at every aspect of the county itself. And who, who gets that information? It's, it's available. If you say, you know, I want to redevelop Big Speed, and you know a developer, that information is available to them, you know. And our whole concept is to work with all the organizations, you know. You, you heard the list of people that are involved in housing here. Some of them are doing this bit, some are doing that bit. Nobody's looking at the whole picture and trying to bring it together. I mean, there are some other models up in the Traverse City area and, and northern Michigan where this is, no, no, you pivot. Where this has worked out, but uh, it's a long-term investment. And I know you got more things on your agenda, so I don't want to stretch it out.
I have one question. These people have, they obviously know what they're doing. And I'm looking at some of the costs here and so you're, you've asked Tecumseh for ten thousand, you're asking Adrian for thirty thousand. Uh, right away, everybody knows that the population of Tecumseh is about eight thousand, Adrian's about twenty thousand. So that the act really isn't equal there. But also, what if, so now we're talking forty thousand dollars of a summary five thousand dollar ask. What if the other communities in the county don't want to buy it? They just say, thanks for no thanks. Are you gonna come back for more or how's that money gonna be made up?
We're not gonna go back to you for more, no. But we're gonna go look for it. Where do we have to find it? We're committed to that, right? And it may not be a perfect balance between, you know, if somebody's population is twelve percent, somebody's eighteen percent.
Another question, Don, when Don, I met about it, it's like, you know, we're not putting the bill for this hundred percent. I mean, we're, everybody thinks we're just granting money and so they have to have skin in the game too from, from our trawning jurisdictions or immediately consider supporting this, so.
I mean, we've already had some conversations early on with Clinton. And uh, I think maybe Raisin Township, I'm not sure. But um, yeah, I know some pretty significant population bases in those, in some of the townships, so. Um, anyway.
I guess my, one of my concerns is that if, if this is the only money you get, or say Clinton puts money in or whatever, the study is still for the whole
That's right.
part of the county, or is it?
It's the whole county.
It's the whole county regardless.
That's the way it's designed.
Regardless of who puts money in.
Right now, I mean, we're gonna, we're, we're paying Sharon's company the seventy-five thousand dollars. You're gonna get that information free. Now, you know, you're, but we're asking you to pay for the strategic plan. There are some benefits. I mean, you know, you're gonna get some more. You'll, you'll have more tax revenue in the future and, I mean, you have some really interesting redevelopment opportunities, both in downtown and in other parts of the, of the cities.
And Justin would work with us on the strategic plan? Is that my understanding?
Well.
Or he would do a strategic plan for the whole county, or would it be geared towards each individual municipality?
Did you hear that, Justin?
Yes, so, yes, so, but, but while the um, while the plan is countywide, the, the strategic plan would focus individually on each municipality and the results of Sharon's market analysis. So we would take a look at each community and determine uh what could be done or what would need to be done to A, attract developers, B, realize the market potential, C, bring alignment into the development policies within that community, realize that market potential. So each municipality will get a specific uh action agenda related to implementing that, the, the housing market analysis.
What's the difference between this strategic plan and the strategic plan that we have adopted for the city recently? And then the Main Street, we have the Main Street USA program to evaluate shopping in our downtown. So just, is it gonna incorporate that? Is it different than that?
This is housing.
Well, the, the implication of this strategic plan, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, is that that he would look at our comprehensive plan that we just finished and determine whether there are impediments within that that would in some way prevent us from attracting the housing that theoretically Sharon would determine wants to come here. Am I, am I correct about that, Justin?
Yeah, so that, that is a portion of it. It would be integrating your comprehensive plan citywide. The second part of that would be, again, like I said, looking at zoning. And we just talked about infill development. And under current zoning, does the zoning allow for specific types of an infill development? Whether it's accessory dwelling units, whether it's townhouses, row houses, different types of formats of housing. Uh, we, we would really, I, I guess, identify uh the code impediments that you have now, if there are any. There may not be any, but we would want to make sure uh that the code as it stands uh right now would not be a hindrance to realizing your true market potential as identified through the market analysis.
Sharon and Justin, you would agree that it, it could be that with all those impediments, if there were any removed, it might be that we still aren't able to attract development, right? It, it, it may just be that housing costs more to build than you can sell it for.
So as part of the plan, one of the things that we would also look at is costs related to construction. And then what types of tools, financial tools, grants or incentives may be out there to help support? Whether it's tax increment financing, brownfield, uh TIF. There are current number of bills that are currently in the House being reviewed and, and up for a potential passage that could support houses. So we would really do a full uh review of all of those financial tools that are out there and then make specific recommendations to your community. What would work, what, what may need to, to be utilized for implementation purposes? And then, and then uh provide that report to you.
I think my, you know, my struggle with this a little bit is, is that I think that the kind of housing we need, and Greg just said it, I think that you can't build that. No developer's gonna come in unless they get a pilot, or unless on a pilot project or, or, or a tax abatement in order, in order to recoup or totally make any money on it. Because again, it's like, you know, we need essentially affordable housing, you know, not necessarily, you know, bottom. We need something that folks can afford. And new development is not going to re-get a return of investment on the developer um, because of the rising cost of everything that's going on right now. And then may, and maybe that would change. But, I mean, we need affordable housing that people can afford. I think that's the main need we need in Adrian. Now, that might not be, they don't need that in uh Britain Township or, or, or Cambridge Township. But our needs are, we need our citizens to be able to, able to afford rent for themselves and their families. And then will a developer come in and build a fifty-unit complex? That they, they're gonna be guaranteed to get a return on, because again, nobody's gonna do it for free, nobody's gonna do it because they're bored. They're gonna wanna get a return on that investment. And, and so are they gonna get a return on that?
So I can. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, um, if you don't mind me going ahead and just kind of responding. I'll, I'll be honest, there's no guarantee in any of the work that we do that we can, I mean, there's just absolutely no guarantee that it will directly result in a project. However, we are very focused and very tuned into those very issues that you're describing. And we, we're hypersensitive to the challenge right now. And because of that, a lot of the work that we do is really focused on trying to close that gap um between cost and rev.
I, I think.
Renew and profitability for the developers. Why, it, it comes down to making sure that the units are the right formats, that they're the right tenure renters, that they're right size, that they're not supersized units, that we're choosing the right locations. We're looking at manufacturing um alternatives, things like, you know, um prefabbed, for example, cottages, accessory dwellings, you know, just trying, there's a lot of innovation right now, I would say, in the development arena, because the developers can feel it too painfully so. They know that they have to start getting more innovative. And I think Michigan's a little bit behind on innovation. But um, I'm just, I'm just trying to share with you that we are very much tuned into those challenges. I'm sorry, I hope I didn't cut somebody off.
It's okay. I wanted you to finish responding, so um. So we are all aware that if we do approve, you know, if we decide thirty thousand, maybe we decide we're only gonna put in ten thousand, like Tecumseh. Who knows? Their, their median income is so much higher than ours, maybe they should put in more. But if we put in whatever funding amount it is, it's, it's a risk. We may get nothing back from it. It may be, the study might come back and say things that we just either aren't able to do or we already know. There's things, you know, that we already know about the city of Adrian. Um, there might be a jump in there. We don't know. Obviously, we don't know that. So there is that risk. Um, it's not a huge risk, anywhere from, you know, five to thirty thousand. Not a great risk, so that's something to keep in mind. Um, but I, I guess I have a question going on to number C. What is the Housing Lenaway Con- Contractor? And what would they actually be doing with the cities and townships and villages?
Well, I think we addressed that there and, and first piece you have there. So be the individual that would work with each of the municipalities, taking the target market analysis, the strategic plan.
I thought that was.
We would actually hire an individual contractor, would not be a paid physician at any entity. It'd be a contract physician with the, with the Lenaway Community Foundation.
Right.
They would take our effort forward. That, they would be our person to do this. You'd get rid of me and you'd have somebody that's much better to work with. It'd be really great.
So they're gonna take the information from Land Use, they're gonna take Justin's information, and then they're going to help the rest of us implement this strategic plan.
Like, along with, not only just the municipality, bear in mind, all the other housing organizations in town are in the county. You know, we would, we would be working together with all of them. Think about if we could get some seed money, what we could do for Habitat for Humanity, especially with the efforts that are going on on the east side of Calvary.
And this is the three-year person for three hundred thousand dollars?
That includes um overhead expenses for the community foundation. I'm not exactly sure how much, but um, you know, salary would probably be somewhere in the mid-seventies, I think.
So the, that I hear, I couldn't, you, you were speaking pretty fast. I'm trying to write. Six hundred and twenty-five thousand was asterisk, six hundred and seventy thousand.
Six, six seventy-five was for basically for repair funds. We have something else that you need to take care of tonight, so I don't have to go on too long.
Thanks, Don. Eric, you wanna come in? I've got a few minutes for you.
So in our budget that we just adopted, uh, is proposed revenue from and and associated with a fire inspection program. Eric's been thinking about uh how to raise those revenues.
Yep, uh, thank you. So um what we came up with, it was just a draft, as you see, um, nothing set in stone. But we're trying to figure out what's the best way um and most fair way to do the inspections and also uh support the program. So uh, we looked at a lot of different cities of what they do and how they actually um, charge for the, the inspections. This is what we came up with as a starting point. It doesn't specifically have to be an ending point by any means. Uh, but the inspections themselves, uh, depending on what type of a building they are, that will determine how often the inspection gets done. So anything by state law, anything that's an assembly property, which is uh basically uh places where the public can be, uh restaurants, crawls, well, that sort of thing, anywhere where they would assemble is supposed to be inspected once a year. So, and that's, that's restaurants that have. so, and that's, that's restaurants that have more than forty-nine uh, seats or occupancy for more than forty-nine. So anything smaller than that is actually business use. So uh, those would be every two years. So you said it's, it's just a proposal or a draft of something to talk about and try and figure out where we want to head with this. Um, our intention is to uh, basically make the the businesses safe. And um, which is why we don't have, currently won't, we don't have a fee for re-inspections. Because our thought is, if we, so we have an initial inspection, we will um, usually, depending on the severity of something we find, we usually give thirty days to say, get this corrected, we'll come back thirty days from now, as long as everything is fixed. We're good. If we have to make multiple trips back, then that's where we'll have to somehow come up with a fee to to pay for the time it takes to go back and do the follow-ups and that sort of thing. Um, so like I said, it's, it's all a draft. Uh, the other thing is, our, our whole intention is, we'd love it if we show up and there's no violations. Our intention is initially, when we start the program, is to actually send out uh, in the mail to each business and say, um, this is what we're going to be looking for. Have them fix before we show up. Because that's the whole reason we're showing up, is to make sure it's safe. No different than the building inspector or plumbing inspector or mechanical inspector. Um, the, the contractors do the work and then the inspectors come in and to make sure it's done the way it's supposed to be and make sure everything's safe. So. Questions or thoughts or?
So the trick with this is to raise the appropriate amount of money, which we determined is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, the problem is, we don't have a great building inventory right now. We don't necessarily know what's out there. Do you have confidence level that this fee structure will raise that amount of money or we just got to kind of wade into it, get through a cycle and see where?
Yeah, I mean, it's really going to be a, you know, try and see. Um, we used some, what some other municipalities use as a starting point. So we're, we think we're close, but without having, like you say, any inventory, we really have, can't put a definite number on.
So essentially, it'd be like Glenn's position before Jake was here, it'd be general fund neutral, and then this will fund the position when it comes to salary and benefits, correct?
Right.
Okay.
That's the way we set up the budget. We put on, like I say, a revenue item in there, the decision for the fire inspector and a halftime clerical support fire inspector. Uh, a little bit of risk in the early year or years is, like I said, uh, we've all set the fees right. And at the end of the first year, we haven't raised the money that we're supposed to raise. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per job rate. So the first year really should raise, because some are on a two-year cycle. A hundred and fifty plus half of next year as well, regardless of the next year.
Do we do fire inspections currently for existing businesses or?
So the only time, yes, the only, yeah, so the only time we have currently is complaint base or um, new development. Uh, twenty, you're twenty-two years. So about twenty-three or twenty-four years ago, we did. But we did what were called company inspections. So basically, and whoever was assigned to the engine or the rescue would go out to the businesses and do inspections. But it got to a point back then, and you've all seen the numbers of the difference in busy now compared to then, is they were getting pulled away. And that's not fair to business owners, right? Where this person would be dedicated, unless it's a large, large fire, uh, that they would be dedicated to the fire inspections. And they wouldn't set it up for ten o'clock, and at ten oh five, they get pulled away and they come back at ten forty-five, and then they get pulled away. This would be a dedicated position, per se, for um, doing inspections. Uh, the other thing that we will use as far as like, school programs and that sort of thing. Um, a lot of municipalities will do that. Uh, this this position will be a fire prevention. So. Right, yeah, yep.
And so the individual will be, it'll be, so this individual will be cross, he or she would be cross-trained for fight fires too in paramedic or just fire, just code? You got to answer system, your fire extinguisher of the day, or will this person also be, God forbid, we have, like you said, we have a big event.
Right.
Um, could this individual be used in that manner also?
Yes, that's, that's the intention uh, is normally, I don't know of any fire inspector who doesn't have firefighter training.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So could be used, I mean, we're talking, you know, the, the ones every few year fires or, you know, or or even if we're char-handed, because uh, you know, that it's a typical house fire, that they would be cross-trained to that also. So. But like I said, we like to do that as least amount as possible, just for the, the fact of, it's just not fair to the business owners to do that. And and I actually found Chief Trinka in two thousand, December two thousand and one, asked for a full-time fire inspector, because they stopped doing company inspections. I found the memo that he actually submitted, the commission, and it's it's needed. Um, even, we knew it was needed back then. We're just trying to get the program up and running.
I had, I applied for a grant this past summer, a pretty large grant for the shelter, and I had, I asked Chief Messner, I had to work and partner with a lot of local resources and agencies, and one of them is I had to have fire inspection. Um, and he moved me right up. It's not good. Fix a few things, but um, yeah, so it was something I had to have um, to get one of the grants I have. So.
So what Greg's saying is that it's, it may be a little risky the first couple of years, so we get a handle on the inventory we have with our current businesses, whether it be new development or current development. And then, you know, the fees, but you're, I mean, the fees can be adjusted as, because these want to be flat neutral. We don't want to make money on this. We just want to be paid for the program like a rental house program, essentially.
When we talked about it, it changes, is it helps your insurance, like local insurance policies? So.
Yeah, so right now, we're a class four for ISO rating, and that's what your, um, not everybody, I don't know, it's like eighty to ninety percent of the insurance agents use or companies use to figure out what your um, insurance rates are. Right now, we're a class four. We were, uh, I can't remember what I'm at, but we were then a point or two of being a class three, which would reduce everybody in the city's insurance rating, uh, which in turn would it, would reduce their rate, right? Um, so we were close, and this is a big part of it. This was uh, when we had it done about two or three years ago, it was actually bonus points. But my assumption is they're going to turn that into actual points this next time, and it's done every five years. So uh, this has the potential of pushing us over that um, threshold to get more points. And uh, it is where we need to be to actually reduce the insurance rates. And as I said, in all in all, it's, it's not just a money thing, it's a making sure the buildings are safe. That's our number one priority.
Well, being proactive instead of reactive, you could sit around and and then, because we have the manpower to do it, and then if something was to happen, um, again, this is going to be one of those things where, like, say somebody didn't clean their hood for four years. I mean, it, it does happen. I mean, so this is being proactive and keeping not only the customers safe, but also their staff too, when it comes to, I'm going to tell you about the restaurant world, that's, that's where I live in, but um, yeah, I don't, I think this is a good idea.
Eric, would we need a, implementing ordinance or does the fire prevention code provide for this? If we establish the fee schedule?
So the I've looked at a lot of different ordinances from other areas. The fire code allows for it or says what we're supposed to do. There are some language changes that other places would have, that we would add, just to make sure we're covered. Um, and I can have that available for the next meeting.
Your opinion on that, John?
We would need an updated city ordinance to incorporate the proposed fee structure. Court would require it when you sign people thinks that.
So next up, work on implementing ordinance and resolution on fees. Right, Eric, I'll turn it back to you for public comment.
At this time, we will open it up for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. Go ahead.
If I could. If you're aware about the halt, if you were to hold the ARPA funds. When ARPA first started and we first had our committees, there was some other than the junior activity going on. Some commissioners had different thoughts than others. So uh, after a couple of meetings where things occurred, it was just had to give legal opinion on what ARPA funds really could and could not be spent for. What was allowable and what was not allowable.
I guess I was going to the brass. I thought we were going.
So, um, that legal opinion has not come back yet. So because of the fact that that legal opinion has not come back yet, we are, we have halted all the ARPA meetings. There is no allocation. Once that comes back, we effectively go back to ground zero. And anyone who to whom it was inferred that you might get your money, will be told you now have to meet the new criteria. The new legal guidelines and the new matrix. I suspect most of those that have been till then, stood in the iron reasonably short years. There were some serious dis- discontent on a few commissioners, so being one, on the automatic allocation of the funds. The ARPA committee first met, we were told of the nineteen million dollars sixteen thousand committed to county projects. No, for the largest portion of sixteen to go. And that crowd created some, that's why we're, that's why we're, we're, we have to go back now. Because a few of us came disgruntled, raised our hackles and said, we need further definition. So that's more of that. There, there is no ARPA meeting scheduled as of right now. Hoping to have one, probably the first of first of June, maybe late May, but I don't have a prior description. All, all current previous applications be reviewed again. Questions?
Thank you for that clarification. Yeah, just, they just don't mean anything. Any more public comments?
Uh, Kent O'Carroll, one ten South Locust. Um, just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. Uh, first of all, the Crosswell, yeah, it's a very nice proposal. I guess the first thing I heard was that it's going to be a storage unit for the farm. I guess the other part is, you know, they're doing all these other things, they don't want to make it a ten million dollar project. I really don't think the city should be putting in money. I think downtown businesses and the DDA, it should be a special assessment, because those are the businesses that are going to benefit from this. Um, I would also like to remind you of the EBIT grant for precincts one and two, you know, the precincts you guys ignore all the time. They have a grant in hand, a twenty million dollar grant. An outside entity identified that there is a disparity, a disparity in precincts one and two, and they put twenty million dollars to fix that part of the community. What have you done? Mayor, what have you done? What are you proposing to match for the EBIT grant? Uh, the other thing too is, and this goes to record-keeping, and I'm not going to talk about calendars, but you are approving tonight the March twenty-eighth meeting minutes that were for the budget. I guess I didn't get to see those, and I didn't, wasn't able to make comments on the budget that was approved last week, because those meeting minutes weren't approved till after the budget was approved. Uh, Mr. Miller, you walked out of the meeting, so I don't even know if you knew what was on there. So I guess I kind of question how you guys are running your business here.
There ain't no more public comment. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye. And our meeting will begin at seven oh five, so that, yeah. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for May second, two thousand and twenty-two. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauze.
Present.
All commission members present.
Under Communications, C one Finance is a, there is a revenues and expenditure report for February of two thousand and twenty-two. Commissioners, are there any questions or comments on that? Moving on, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move adopt the consent agenda?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Consent agenda approved by.
No public comment?
There is no public comment in the consent agenda. All right.
Anna Mayor, I have a motion to make um, with regard to the regular agenda. I move that Resolution R twenty-two dash oh zero three five be tabled until the next commission meeting on May sixteenth.
In addition to that, we did have a typo on our agenda. The resolution is correct, but the address was incorrectly typed into the agenda. That's Resolution R twenty-two dash zero thirty-seven from administration. A resolution to approve the sale of a vacant parcel. It should read at six twenty-seven Erie Street. So may I get a motion to amend the agenda to table Resolution R twenty-two dash zero thirty-five from administration? A resolution to approve, a resolution to recommend approval of a liquor license for Brenda Rodriguez's Little Taste of Texas until Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And also to rectify and correct Resolution R twenty-two dash zero thirty-seven from administration. Resolution to approve the sale of a vacant parcel at six twenty-seven Erie Street.
So moved.
Support.
You have to go down amended the show.
No.
No?
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauze.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
The motion to table R 22-035 from Administration and to correct R 22-037 from Administration, a resolution to approve the sale of a vacant parcel to 627 Erie Street is approved by an all yes vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda, under Special Orders, Special Order Dash One is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the special assessment role for delinquent rental property registration and inspection fees, including a 10% penalty for late payment. At this time, I now call the special hearing open and anyone may come up to the podium and make comments in relation to this specific special order. Hearing no comments. I now call the public hearing closed. Moving on to Special Order Dash Two. It is a public hearing to hear and consider comments on Special Assessment District Number 395 South Scott Street. I now call the public hearing open for Special Order Dash Two.
How you doing? I've never been to one of these before. I live on 225 South Scott Street. My name is John Elkhedray and retired Navy veteran, retired from Department of Corrections up here at Gus Harrison. On Scott Street, I'm just if you've driven down there lately, you need a four wheel drive truck just to get down that street. I bought the house about five years ago. I've said something to the city commission people. I talked to them about it before, but the street is terrible. Now everyone wants to talk about our curbs and our sidewalks about having these done now. And I'm curious, what are we doing about the street before we do the curbs and the sidewalk? Because the street is terrible. Anybody who drives down that street knows that. I've never been to one of these. I have no idea what I'm really doing up here, but all I know is just trying to get if I drive down that street and I bring my, I can't take my grandkids on a bicycle ride and I have five grandchildren, bicycle ride down my street because the street's terrible. What are we doing to fix that for it before we're doing the curbs and the sidewalks? That's all I got to say.
So just for the audience that's here on this item and the related item, which is Special Order Number Three, which is similar SAD for Mami Court. So you understand the assessment is for driveway approaches and curbing. The city is undertaking through its own funds, the, is it a repaving or reconstructive? Repaving of those streets. So the only thing that's being assessed is are the curbs and the and the, and the driveway approaches, but the street is being repaired as well.
Kent O'Carers, 110 South Locust, this is just for the previous speaker. So you know, the city of Adrian is one of the few communities in Michigan that actually charges a special assessment district for curb and gutter. Most communities, that's part of the road. Part of the road is typically from back of curb to back of curb is what the city portion is, but the city is relying on some memo from 1947 by someone in the facilities department who wrote a memo and said that we've historically done this, so we're going to continue to do it. I'd like to see the Adrian City Commission step up. We've got all that money in general fund and get rid of special assessment districts. Thank you.
Hearing no more comments. I now call Special Order Hearing Number Two closed. Moving on to Special Order Dash Three, it is a public hearing to hear and consider comments on Special Assessment District, Number 396 Mami Court. At this time, I now call the public hearing open.
Good evening. My name is Paul Wisniewski. I live on Mami Court, number 12, as a matter of fact. And the repaving and the work to be done on Mami Court is long overdue. I do have some concerns and that is the driveway assessment. The driveway going to my house is in perfectly good shape. It was replaced probably 10 years ago. There's not a nick in it, not a scratch in it. And I'm, from my understanding, it's going to be taken out, replaced at my cost, which I don't agree with. So I guess I would like that looked into. Another thing about the, the whole issue is the speed at which some people drive through Mami Court. Not just the residents, but people that come through there. So along with the repaving of the road, I would like to see at least, and I know a speed bump is not feasible because of snow conditions and things like that, but a speed dip or something to slow people down. There are children that live in there that walk out in the street. It's a private drive for the most part. And it's very dangerous when some people come through there. And one other thing, I assume that along the way, they're going to regrade the road to make sure it's level. Because my concern, ever since the last time the court was done, which was probably 30 years ago, 25, 30 years ago, I've had a dip in front of my house that accumulates water. And when it rains, it rains hard, the water is in my front yard. Because there are only two sewer locations on the whole court. One on the center court at the west end and one on the outside of the court at the west end. So all the water flows that way. So those are my concerns right now. And I guess I would like some feedback on it sometime in the future because the letter that came from the city was really not clear as to what we were doing. Thank you.
Hearing no more comments. I now call the public hearing for Special Order Dash Three closed. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution R 22-029 is from Finance. It is a resolution to approve the special assessment role for delinquent rental property registration, inspection fees, parking assessments, improvements or abatements of public hazards on single lots in the city of Adrian and other miscellaneous invoices, including a 10% penalty for late payment. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry. Yes. Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-030 is from Finance. It is a resolution to approve the special assessment role for delinquent water and sewer invoices. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-031 is from Engineering. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and approve the purchase of a salt truck. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Vote to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I'd just like to thank our city administrator and city staff for locating a very reasonably priced used vehicle instead of having to purchase a new one, which saved the city, I believe, $90,000 if I remember correctly from our, from our notes. So thank you to whichever staff members were involved in that. It's greatly appreciated.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-032 is from Engineering. It is a resolution to approve the establishment of Special Assessment District Number 395 South Scott Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments?
Matt Tomaszewski, City Engineering Services Director. Thank you. Just want to say I will be here after the meeting for any residents that would like to talk about Mami Court and South Scott Street.
Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-033 is from Engineering. It is a resolution to approve the establishment of Special Assessment District Number 396 Mami Court. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Hou. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-034 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve application to the Lamp Grant for the Adrian City Market. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
I would like to request for the public's knowledge that either Mr. Marx or Mr. Elliott discuss what the Lamp Grant would, is for and how much.
Say who you are and what you, what's your title is too, please. Thank you.
J. Marx, Adrian City Market Master. The Lamp Grant is through the Department of Agriculture, USDA. It is a local agricultural market program which specializes in farmers market promotion programs. The grants for $60,000 over three years with a 25% match. It'll also go to the DDA's. They'll be taking over the, taking over the market next year. So they would be the ones that would be working from their budget. So this is really just you approving this and contingent for them, but it's a $60,000 grant with a 25% match. And that's going to cover the, the salary and marketing and advertising of the, of the market.
I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-036 is from Administration. It is a resolution to appoint Garen Luca Miller PC as the city attorney. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-037 is from Administration. It is a resolution to approve the sale of a vacant parcel at 627 Erie Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move adopt the resolution. Support.
Are there any public comments? 627, that was a typo in there. That's why we amended the agenda. Yes. Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 22-038 is from Administration. It is a resolution to reappoint Joaquin Ramos to the Human Relations Commission. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I would just like to say that Joaquin has been on the Human Relations Commission for quite some time and has really helped progress us. I am also honored and privileged to be a part of the Human Relations Commission and serve alongside Joaquin. And just what Joaquin brings to that Human Relations Commission has really revitalized and just really taken us to the next level. And we're doing some really great things in the city of Adrian and, and getting a lot accomplished. And a lot of that is thanks to Joaquin and his hard work and dedication. So thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
At this time, it is now time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address. We will first begin inside the chambers and then once there is no more public comment inside the chambers, we will open it up to the Zoom participants.
Hello, I'm the previously mentioned Joaquin Romals, 422 South Winter Street. I don't really have anything HRC related I'm bringing up, though I do have a few things. So one, I'm quite excited about the splash pad. I think it's just about done. I'm really excited to go check it out tomorrow. Not playing it just to see it and know that it has indeed where it can exist. It's very exciting seeing the construction over these, oh, like a month now. And of course, all the excitement, just waiting for it to come is, we had discussed this quite a while ago. I also am quite excited to have a good attorney on call and be able to know the city has getting some good advice. Also, a three related, our second Friday is on the 13th, so not this Friday, next Friday. Of course, we'll be happy to have you there. We'll be at Parish Park, you know, right next to the splash pad. So looking forward to seeing some of you there. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Senator Dale Zorn. Proud to say that my address is now five twenty four Pennycost Highway. I just wanted to stop in tonight, as you know, and that haven't been getting to a lot of meetings because of the COVID. We wasn't having meetings. I'm trying to catch up on our local government municipalities. And hopefully, within the next few months, I'll get them caught up. But just tonight, I had four meetings I could have gone to, and I chose to come here. They will have meetings next month, too, I'm sure. But the thing I wanted to mention tonight is that, you know, we are in budget talks now, and we're probably going to be setting our budget out this week, maybe as early as tomorrow to the to the House. I did want to take and run by with you over the past eight years. What Lenoy County and Adrian has received as far as funding from the state. The Lenoy County as a whole has received just over a hundred million dollars in grants and low interest loans. And that includes all government entities. Another twenty five million dollars came in through the private sector with matching grants. Of that, I'm happy to say that I was a part of all this funding as far as winning grant money for you. But Adrian has received just over forty nine million dollars in in grant funding. And another about ten million dollars in private match funding. And what this gone to is education facilities, infrastructure, roads, sewers, water, infrastructure, facade grants, economic development grants. And I have a complete list, which I won't go through. When you're when you're talking fifty million dollars, it's you can't remember every every nick and cranny that went into this. But I do have a report that we put together for Lenoy County. And and obviously, that Adrian is part of that. And if anyone is interested in it, I'd be happy to get you a copy of it. But some of it that maybe to refresh your memory was one point five million dollars in community block grants for the buildings downtown. Fire alarm?
Your time is up.
My time is up. That's why I wanted to keep it short. So if you'd like a copy of it, just let me know, and we'd be happy to to get that to you. Thank you very much. I hope to see you again soon. Thank you.
My name is Gerald Frederick. I live at nine four four Hawk Avenue. And I received a notice in the mail, actually through my landlord, something about unsafe conditions of my property. And I'm trying to get ahold of Jake, who did my inspection at the time. He said the only thing I had an issue with is I have a carbon monoxide detector in my home, which I replaced and emailed pictures and the receipts and everything. So I'm trying to find out what the issue is with my property. I don't have any trash laying around my yard or anything like that, or any broken down vehicles. I have children. I have toys in my yard. I mean, so I'd like to find out what the issue is so it can be resolved, but I have not been able to get him to return my calls. So if that can be resolved and have him call me or something, that'd be awesome. Thank you for your time.
Linda Martinez. Ten sixteen Treat Street in Adrian. I received a letter today saying that after a meeting with William and I believe her name was Lisa and myself, that they had come to the conclusion that there was a meter down there, and I just didn't feel comfortable. So I put my boots on with the employee from Blissfield Heating and Plumbing. And there is no meter downstairs whatsoever with a flashlight. It took me a while to get here because I was trying to get the pictures printed for you. And Staples is having a hard time. I am going to forward the pictures over. I'm asking the committee that they postpone on closing the statements today because I have proof with I put my wet boots on and everything that the there is no such thing as a meter downstairs in the basement. Outstairs of the building has been closed down for several, well, a couple of years. And there's a broken pipe down there. William said to me that possibly from, you know, combustion in your your pipes break, you know, that happens in Michigan. But with the water gone, there's no such thing. I talked to both Blissfield Heating and Plumbing and American Sewage and Plumbing today. And they said that scientifically, there's no such thing as it combusting when there's no water left in there and hasn't bed. The water that's down the basement, you can clearly see from my pictures that there is foundation problems that the water is coming in from there. It's not from the water. So there's no water being charged whatsoever. And in the huge package that each one of you received, you can see the billing where it was stopped, and there has not been water in there since. So I'm asking that you hold off until the next meeting so that I can get you the rest of the evidence and statements from the two plumbing companies that I went to today. Thank you.
David Kovaleski, one 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 North Pearl Street, apartment one Tecumseh, Michigan. Do we cover this resolution forbid for private weed mowing yet?
Yes, we did.
All right, I want to bring up something here. I discussed this with you about that weed mowing and trying to tack it onto my property. Well, that gentleman that was up here does my mowing for me. And you said something about me and pictures of it. I have yet to see those pictures where the weeds were. Nobody's doing nothing. And then I went, at that time, I went and seen the city administrator, and he said, well, we got a lot to mow. So what is this? Do as I say, not as I do? I'm waiting for a comment.
We don't comment on public comment. We've been over this before.
Well, has anything been done? Maybe you ought to vacate, you know?
I just have one more thing I could add. John Alkberg again. I was walking my granddaughter two weeks ago.
Can you just state your name and address?
John Alkberg, two two five South Scott. Walking my granddaughter down to Bird Lake. They're taking to the duck pond. My nine year old granddaughter says, hey, Grandpa, what's that smell? Because we got so many great marijuana places in the city of Adrian now, where I have my nine year old, five year old, and seven year old asking me, Grandpa, why is this going on? So he wants to make money. But sad, the city of Adrian has gone to the city of capital marijuana here. I know a lot of people are against it, like that gentleman back there. I've been in law enforcement for over twenty years. And it, you know, I got my own opinion about it. But it's sad that when you walk your grandkids down South Scott Street and go to Duck Pond there, you smell marijuana. And to me, now the city of Adrian is the capital of marijuana for state of Michigan. I don't like it. That mean me might ever talk about moving out because I don't like it anymore. That's just my opinion.
We will now open a public comment for the Zoom participants. You will see the three minute time limit on the screen, and for the record, please state your name and address.
Kent Okar is one ten South Locust. I would just like to talk about some of the failures of the Adrian City Commission. And I'm asking that you try to do something not to fail us when it comes to the Phoenix project. You failed the Adrian residents by accumulating a twenty seven million dollar pension deficit. Please don't fail us when it comes to the Phoenix project. You failed the Adrian City residents by spending half a million dollars on a water line in Adrian Township. Please do not fail the residents of Adrian by not opposing the Phoenix project. You failed the Adrian City residents when you provided mutual aid, which encourages people not to put their businesses in the city. Please don't fail us when it comes to the Phoenix project. You failed us. You failed the city of Adrian residents when you lost the only hospital in the city of Adrian. Please don't fail us when it comes to the Phoenix project. The Phoenix project was contacted by one single person who is manipulating six other commissioners to build a hundred million dollar facility in the city of Tecumseh. You need to take action. You need to oppose this. You need to tell the Lenoie County Commissioners that this is a Tecumseh specific project and that you oppose it. Or you need to put on your orange shirts and move the county seat to Tecumseh where it belongs while you guys sit there and take no action.
Hearing no more public comment, I will now open it up for any commissioner comments. Hearing no commissioner comments. I do want to invite everyone to come downtown, though, for First Friday. It is our first car show and the big First Friday of the summer season. So we hope that everyone will come downtown this Friday and celebrate what is all the great things that are happening and are vibrant downtown and and our market and everything that is happening down there and just enjoy, and hopefully we have great weather. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.